Thank you for joining us. This is the Kamaki Board Number Four Meeting for January seventeenth. And it appears we do have quorum. So thanks, everybody, for joining us. First item of business is the filling of vacancies. We have one vacancy on our board for Sub District Three. That is generally West Kamaki. Are there any volunteers in person or online to fill this vacancy? Anybody online here? Yeah, so it covers West Kamaki. And the general area. Sorry, hang on one second. I'll just give him that. Yeah, we do have the map.
He has the map. Want to see it out, but. Tree.
Sub District Three. So it's basically Eva of Twelfth Avenue, mostly. Kind of Makai of Wailei Avenue. Generally.
ECU.
Are you in that area, sir?
Does it cover Ethan Harding?
Ethan Harding. Jeffrey, do you have a better map?
I believe so, but if you're interested, come up, give him your actual address. He can look you up and make sure with district you're in. Because ultimately, that would be the question to be asked anyway.
Chairman, you want to move into the city versus hundred blocks?
Yeah, okay, perfect. Okay, so we're gonna, while that's happening, we're just gonna move on. So our next item of business is the city monthly reports. First off, the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have the fire department online? Yes, we do.
Hello, I'm firefighter Carr with the Kamaki Fire Department. And I have a list of the incident statistics of December. And fire related, we had seven activated alarms, no fire. Emergencies, we had fifty-four medicals. One motor vehicle collision with pedestrian. Two motor vehicle crashes, collisions. One mountain rescue and one hazardous materials incident. And the fire safety tip of the week for the month is lithium ion batteries. Lithium, lithium ion batteries supply power to many devices. Like smartphones, laptops, e-scooters and e-bikes. Also, e-cigarettes, smoke alarms, toys and even cars. And if damage or not used correctly, these batteries can catch on fire or explode. So always try to follow the manufacturer's instructions. Use only the battery that it's intended for and the charging cord. Also replace cords that are damaged, frayed or sticky. Charge devices in a cool and ventilated area. And unplug all devices after being fully charged. E-scooters and e-bikes should be charged outside. And never charge your smartphones or laptops on your bed or under your pillows. And also store your batteries away from anything that can catch on fire. Is there any questions?
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Mounted rescue was where?
Oh, sorry. Our mountain rescue was on Diamond Head, on the trail. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? For the fire department? Questions online? If not, oh, we do. Lori Yamada, question. Go ahead.
Okay, been a while since I've been here. Anyway, I was wondering, you know, in Mauma Park, up the hill. Yeah, you know what that is? Sixteenth Avenue Park, end of Sixteenth Avenue. Yeah. Has there been any kind of assessment of fire risk? To the homes surrounding that park because it is all green. And when it is all dry, it could become a fire hazard.
Yes, we log, we try to drive past and monitor, but we also have people who come in and check up on it also, but I'll bring that up with my captain if we could bring that up again in the next meeting. We could talk about that more in depth.
Okay, yeah, it's perfect. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. That's Lori. Any other questions for the fire department? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven, East Honolulu. The following are the monthly statistics for December twenty twenty-three. Motor vehicle theft, there were eight incidents, burglary, nine. Theft, twenty-nine, car break-ins were fourteen. And we had six thousand three hundred and fifty-five calls for service. Our safety tip for the month is home security tips. And just to highlight a few of those is when you leave your homes, please secure your doors and windows and any other access and entry points. When you are at home, please also keep those doors secured so no random people can enter your home easily. Also, please be aware of your surroundings, your neighbors. And if you see anything suspicious or out of the ordinary, please call nine-one-one and request to have an officer come and check. And we really appreciate when you meet with our officers so they can get all the details as accurately and timely as possible. And lastly, if you're able to, oh, sorry, two more, if you're able to have security lighting and security cameras, that's a big help. And then lastly, if you do come home and find that your house may have been broken into or burglarized, immediately call nine-one-one, request an officer to come. We'd like to check the residents to make sure that it is, that there's no one in there, there are no suspects in your residence. With that, that's our monthly report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Members? Any questions from the public? Lieutenant, one, one just bit of information. I did receive an email from an individual living at the corner of Kiloway Avenue and Seventh Avenue. And this person indicated that I think they're observing a lot of speeding along Kiloway Avenue in this area. So just, just thought I'd just bring that to your attention.
Okay, thanks very much. We had a couple of complaints. I can't remember if that's the exact location, but I know we've had some for Kiloway Avenue. So we'll follow up on that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thanks very much.
Thanks. Have a great evening.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the Board of Water Supply, our last city reports. Lorna Heller, Lorna.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I have one rainbreak, main break to report that was in December on the twenty-sixth on Sierra Drive was an eight inch. That was the only one that occurred during December. The only announcement I have this month is that we're at a new year, so it's an opportunity to change small habits that can make a big impact. So a significant one is water conservation. So if you're conscientious about water use, we can ensure an adequate supply for generations to come. So I've just got some easy ways to save water. Just check around for leaks. Replace your old toilet with a water sense labeled model. That's one point two eight gallons per flush or less. And you can qualify for rebates, forty-five dollars from the Board of Water Supply. Just a quick note and just giving you guys a heads up, it will become a hundred dollars come Friday. So wait till Friday to go buy your toilets and take advantage of the very small time special that we're gonna be doing. Another thing that you can do is consider planting drought resistant plants. Purchase a rain barrel and qualify for a forty-dollar rebate for the Board of Water Supply. And also put a nozzle on your garden hose. Any other tips that you want to take a look at, we can visit our website at www dot Board of Water Supply dot com. That's announcements I have tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Hey, questions for the members? Becky?
Hi, Lorna. You probably know about the water main breaks in Kamaki that happened. Gosh, what is today? Wednesday? Happened a few days ago.
You know, I did happen to drive by.
When I did drive by there. And I'm on Fifteenth Avenue, so this water main break also on this section of Fifteenth Avenue between knowing out near Lori's house and Keanu. I just wanted to say thank you. I think it must have been you guys. What are they called? Water horses?
Water wagons?
Water wagons. I've heard of them. I don't know if it's a water pony, water horse.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like that moment of panic, you know? Like I woke up and needed to make coffee and I couldn't, and it was like, oh no. And I'm like, I really need to shower too, and I couldn't. And we got the water, I think, by mid-afternoon, but before I really let myself panic, the water horse was on the street.
Nice.
I didn't realize that you guys do that, so I just wanna, I think it was you. It must have been Board of Water Supply that provides the.
Yes, correct. Yeah, whenever there's a main break, and I guess it affects so many homes, they will definitely bring out those water wagons, horses, whatever you call it. Yeah.
Yeah, so that was just, I just want to say that was a real comfort, and I just wanted to share that with other community members, like when that happens, they were there before I had a chance to panic. So that was really good. But just a note on that, and I know this is not you, but you must be coordinating with the city, is all of us on this section of Fifteenth Avenue still have, yeah, it was Monday morning. It was a holiday, so we were, many of us were home. And they, last I checked, no one's picked up the trash because it's Monday morning that the trash comes. So all of us on this block still have our bins on the street.
Oh, because of the main break that.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's going to go there, got it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, that is just, it just feels like a Monday morning for three days.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but I just wanted to share that and then maybe you can coordinate. I don't know if we were forgotten or what, but I think it was just this section of Fifteenth Avenue.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm glad, you know, you didn't have time to panic and you got your water when you wanted it and needed it.
I have lots of opportunities to panic, so don't worry. Thank you, Lorna.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Lorna? Members from the public? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, did you mention the Coco Head? There was a water break on Monday too, wasn't there?
I think that's when Becky was mentioning.
You said Becky already mentioned it?
Yes, that's, that's what they were just discussing.
I thought they were talking about Fifteenth Avenue and Sixteenth.
Yeah, it also affected Fifteenth Avenue.
There were, there were two, two water breaks. My landlord said he looked at the map and he said, yeah, I saw the one in Coco Head, and I noticed a lot of the shops were closed. It was big. And if you, if you drive around, you can still see the mudslurry all on the streets. But I think it was probably very disruptive to the Coco Head businesses there. And I guess, I don't know, maybe I should comment too, is the, the general consensus in my neighborhood is just like, wow, this infrastructure must be very old. And it was pretty cold this weekend, so I could see, you know, contraction, expansion and things not fit in right and pop. So, so it, I, I hope maybe this is just a cautionary tale before it gets too big to like be able to handle it, to manage it.
Yeah, you nailed it. Our infrastructure is really old. The other main brick I was talking about in the report that occurred in December was actually installed in nineteen thirty-one. So, yeah, you got some old infrastructure. So that's why we have the CIP projects that we always upgrade our, you know, infrastructure. We look for places that had a lot of main breaks. I'm gonna focus our efforts at those sections, so.
All right, any other questions for Lorna, Board of Water Supply? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Lorna. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna jump back to the filling of vacancies. So, sir, I understand you are a resident of Sub District Three. Are, are you interested in serving on the board?
Yes.
Okay, why don't, if you don't mind coming up and just telling us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Where, what should I stand?
Yeah, maybe where the camera can catch you?
If you understand like right, not right from the projector, but you can stand like this one, I'll get you the camera. That way everyone can kind of see it.
Right there?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I haven't quite.
All right. Um, my name is Franklin Cho. I've lived in this neighborhood for ten years. And I work for the Seining County, a newly minted Seining County worker since August. Before that, I was a bookkeeper in the private sector, a small business bookkeeper at Mint HR. And I joined the Treasury Division of the Seining County of Honolulu. I was just gonna talk about something about the program that I'm involved with. And what I'm as well saying now instead of, you know, in the community concerns. I joined the Real Property Tax Relief Office inside of Real Property Tax Collection Office. It's a program that has been around since around two thousand and five. It's to give tax, real property tax relief to eligible homeowners, mostly lower income homeowners, many of them on fixed income seniors, but there's no age limit to it. And this year, the application period was from July till the end of September for next year's property tax assessment, twenty-four to twenty-five. We have five thousand plus applications and, you know, quite a bit more than the prior year. And eligibility is basically, you have to have a home exception. You have to be living at your property. You cannot own any other property. And the total gross income of all the title holders are under eighty thousand. It was sixty, it was raised to eighty. So those are eligibility requirements. If you're interested more in, in this program, you can go to honolulu.gov slash Treasury. And there'll be a link to a brochure that you can look at that we use this year. And there's a link for the application that will come online around July of next year. And my interest in neighborhood boards have been since twenty sixteen. I'm an avid golfer at the Ala Wai. And I heard that the Ala Wai Golf Course might be, you know, half of it might be taken for development. So that's when I started getting interested in the neighborhood boards. People tell me, go, and I started going to four neighborhood boards surrounding that, becoming a vote holder. That's still our vote that I still vote. But I come here once in a while, and it's, I do live here. Anyway, that's about it. I'm not sure if the governor's representative is here today or not, but I look at the minutes, that person is not here. So during the community section, I wanted to raise a concern about the on-ramp to H one West. Why not?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Any, any questions?
Before you run away.
So you guys can ask him any questions you guys want to ask before we take a vote, if you guys would like to on the board.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Paul? Did you have a question?
No, sorry. I've known him for many years. He's been an active participant, so you're welcome to do.
Great, perfect. Okay, any questions for Mr. Chung here, on the board members? All right, seeing none. So Jeffrey, remind me, do we need a motion?
Well, so what we're gonna do is do a voice vote. I'm gonna announce everyone that I have on here that's currently present. If you would like him on the board, you say his name. So can you say your name one more time?
Franklin Cho.
Franklin. So if you would like him to be on the board, you say Franklin. If you would not like for him to be on the board, you just don't say anything. Or you can say no, but it's preferred you just don't say anything.
All right, got it.
For the board members online, do you guys hear that?
One more time, please.
Okay, so if you would like for this gentleman, his name is Franklin, to be on the board, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a roll call. If you would like him to be voted onto the board, say Franklin. If you would not like him to be on the board, just keep yourself muted or unmuted and say no.
Okay.
Does that sound, is that good? Do you guys hear me that time?
Yes.
All right, so I'm just gonna go on the list that I have. Chair Kang.
Franklin.
Absent. Judy.
Franklin.
Kelsey?
Franklin.
I believe Stacy's also online.
Franklin.
Becky, are you there?
Yes, Franklin.
I believe Joyce is also online.
Yes, Franklin.
Paul?
Franklin.
And Stacy.
Franklin.
All right, so, so it is past. I do have some things that he does have to fill out. If he does do the little, if he does do the oath, he is more than welcome to sit up here as long as it's comfortable with you guys.
Yes, absolutely. So do we need to take a brief recess? That was morning?
That is up to you. If not, you can move around the public and whether you want to keep the meeting going. I can do this behind the scenes if you'd rather not take a recess.
Okay, so you can swear in then while we're proceeding? Okay, okay, so why don't we, why don't we do that?
Welcome.
Well, that's, that's amazing.
I made a wrong decision.
Yeah, perfect. You've been an active participant for a number of years. Thanks very much.
You can have a seat here or over there.
Justin will take care of it.
All right, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on, while that's going on, to public input, limited to three minutes each. Is there any public input from the board? And actually, I see Lori was on, Lori asked for public input, so Lori, go ahead first. Lori, I think you're on mute.
Hello. Hey, how's it going, guys? Anyway, my public input is that now I'm with Invision Kamaki. So we recently had a meetings with, a meeting at Mauma Nature Park with the Department of Parks and Recreation to see if I can do an adopt the park contract with them to talk about how to improve the park slash perhaps helping with fire break information for the residents. As well as having volunteers come in to plant trees, to reforest with native trees on the upper park area. And also there are talk about planting a lay garden and having the kula halas as well as the Hawaiian immersion schools locally, that's, I mean, close around the area to, to establish a, the plots, establish a community garden with plots to grow these things for their use. So there's all kinds of ideas to acknowledge and to think about. So I'm gonna take all this information and try to put it into some sort of action plan of what the residents agree upon or what they would like to see, as well as the community. I mean, that's, and see what we have and perhaps get grants for it. The people who attended were the DPR TA Director Denny Higa and his fellow workers Devon Komatsubara and Edward Mitsuda. And also we had Tony Robinson, who was the former DPR Director in Kamaki. And her son, he had a great idea about having a culinary kind of garden. Jackson Sayama was present as well as his aide chemo, and he had a lot of ideas about the Hawaiian immersion kind of things, as well as Pua, your Pua, who, who is over there. And she was a great help. She's gonna help us as, as a member of council member says, what you call it, group. And then we had Daniel Donnell, of course, from Trees for Honolulu's Future, helping us out, as well as Jenna Mao, who's the director at Kamaki Community Park. She helps us, she can help with having, getting us permits to do things. So it was a really positive and intense meeting because for one hour, it seemed like two hours, you know? And, yep, very exciting. People are motivated and should be interesting. I'll let you know when we have our next meeting. I'm planning on having a Zoom so we can have more people involved without them coming all the way to the park for just an hour, you know? So anyway, that's what I got for now. Mahalo. Yes.
Thanks for the updates. All right. Let's see, Becky, did you have a question for Lori or did you have a separate?
I just, I just have a comment to express my support, very strong support for this effort. I recently moved and Mauma is the closest park to me. And, you know, I immediately tried to like go hang out there and embrace it, but I just wasn't feeling it. It just seemed just really hot and not very well kept and it just felt like a shame that it wasn't being used very much. And so before you said it, I was just thinking, oh, yeah, so it'd be amazing to have like a community garden. And then you said a community garden, it's like, oh, that would be, because I I used to spend a lot of time at the Ala Wai Community Garden, just like looking at what people have done and, you know, what they're growing. And it's just, it's just fun to have those little plots and, you know, just to see people doing things there. And I think it would just help get people engaged. So thank you for your work on that, and I just want to support and let me know how I can add more support to that effort.
I'll put you on volunteer list.
Hey, yeah, I'm not far, but yeah, it's a shame that it's not being used, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Thanks for the comments. And thanks, Lori. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, so. Lori, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Calvin. Calvin Hara.
Hi, aloha, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you folks. I'm gonna ask if I can also just do a brief, I'm on the agenda for KBPA Kamaki Business for Don Don, if I can just do it at the same time now, if that's okay, Chair?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Calvin?
Okay, so first of all, this is a community announcement. There will be a blood drive on January twenty-fifth. It's a Thursday next week, nine AM to three PM at the Aloha Pacific Federal Credit Union. There's a flyer that's posted on this board's meeting. As you know, blood is always in need. Here in Hawaii, we don't have the opportunity to easily get blood from other states. So all the, the kokoa from our community definitely helps people in need and sometimes, you know, really emergency needs. So if you can schedule that, Blood Bank of Hawaii, of course, is conducting the blood drive over at the thirty-four sixty-five Wailei Avenue at Aloha Pacific Federal Credit Union. So the other thing is also gonna go over to KBPA and the Kamaki Christmas Parade. I was the chair this past year again. I want mahalo to all of you on the neighborhood board for participating. We, we had probably more people than the prior year. Participants were a thousand plus. And then I think the spectators, the, our community people watching just were so enthusiastic. You know, it's, again, the sense of the holiday spirit and I think for Kamaki is we are a community. You know, it's just, are very much so people that live and work or visit the neighborhoods of Kamaki. So we will see you, folks, again, hopefully in eleven months. We always look for, forward to more volunteers. So if you're interested, please contact us at our website, KBPAHawaii.com. And lastly, mahalo to Seining County of Honolulu from Mayor Blangiardi's office for supporting the parade to HPD and all the other, you know, first responders that were there. Uh, and, um, all the other, uh, you know, uh, first responders that were there. We're very fortunate. Uh, we had a successful parade with no incidents. Uh, something we always look forward to, to have a nice parade. And also to the elected officials who attended, um, appreciate it, um, that, that you were, uh, out there to meet your constituents. So that's about it. Thank you so much. And if any questions?
Alright, any questions for Calvin? Great job on the parade. Thank you, Calvin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Looks like Becky has a question or comment. Becky, oh. A thank you to Calvin, I think. Alright, okay. Thanks, Calvin. Okay, any other public input? Alright. Now, what, did you have something?
Yeah, I want to ask, uh, Lori. She says they, uh, she be, she joined an organization and they want to plant more trees. But you know the problem with, uh, people when they plant trees? They taller than your house and it blocks your view, like, well, who knows where I live. I can see the ocean, but on Fakim and Harding, they built two new houses about five years now. And they got a vampire tree taller than their house and they already got a two-story house. So it's starting to block that ocean. So there should be a limit on how high your tree can be. Maybe roof level, you know? That way doesn't block your view. You can't do anything about the building. Because you gotta permit to build the building, so you cannot tell them you cannot have it that high. But the trees, see, she's going to be with an organization trying to get the walk trees. You know, that way it's better. It doesn't block the view when you wanted to see something. Right now I can, uh, get a good view of, uh, the, for the mountain there with, uh, winter, winter rice. There will be a tree on so tall it blocked the view. So that's what I wanted to tell Lori about. Try to get trees that doesn't go so high that it's higher than your house.
Okay, thank you. So I know Lori's still on, so I, I know that comment's directed to her, so I'm sure she's, she's listening to that. So thank you.
Lot of leaf on the ground.
Thank you. Alright.
Let me say anything? No?
Um.
Well, um, I guess it's sort of, sort of like a neighbor to neighbor thing. You could ask them to trim them. But if it's an official street tree, you know, there, I guess the city can do something about it. Alright, yep.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, our next comment, uh, let's see, Audrey, do you have your hand up? Comment, public comment?
Oh, yes. Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay, great. Hi, aloha, everyone. Um, Adoree Yu, uh, have a quick update on the Queen Theater. And please bear with me tonight. I'm having technical issues with the computer I normally use. So I'm afraid I do not have video capability on the one that I'm using. And, um, that might be for the best because I'm also having problems with my right eye at the moment. Um, but, so I just wanted to quickly update everybody on the, the plan going forward with the Queen Theater. Um, the plan is to develop the property, uh, by taking advantage of the historic rehabilitation tax credits. Um, we're hoping to do that at the, you know, state and federal levels so that we can deliver the property in shell condition. And, um, you know, there has actually been new interest in leasing the property in the past couple of months. Um, and in the meantime, um, you know, the Queen is secure and safe. And to address concerns regarding the structural integrity of the building in particular, um, the Queen is structurally safe. We've had the building assessed by a structural engineer and also several contractors. And everyone's actually been, um, you know, pleasantly surprised by the condition of the structure. Um, so that's good news. And I will, you know, I'll continue to attend the neighborhood board meetings every month to address any immediate safety concerns. And, you know, always feel free to contact me directly, um, with any safety concerns. I'll share my email in the chat. And, um, yeah, uh, thank you all for your interest and patience. As you know, the Queen is a big project. Um, but we are working on it diligently. Um, and, oh, also as for Ms. Garrison, I know some of you, um, inquired about, um, what happened with her. So we are still in discussions with her and are waiting on a business plan. Um, I understand she's been in contact with a number of you, so I know that, um, so just know that. I feel her idea for the Queen to be a local community theater that supports Kaumiki residents, low-income students, and local businesses is wonderful. Um, and we're doing our best to work with her and hear her plan out. And that's it for today unless anyone has questions.
Okay, questions? Becky?
Hi, Adoree. Thank you so much for that update. Um, I'm encouraged to hear about the, uh, the progress you're making. Sorry, that's a, I'm sure you all hear the helicopter above. Um, I was curious about this historical designation thing. What, what was that called again?
Uh, so there are, um, there are historic rehabilitation tax credits and they are available to, um, certain properties over, uh, a certain age. And obviously the Queen Theater qualifies, um, because it, I think the effect of your Roosevelt was nineteen fifty-seven.
Oh, so it's, it's just an, an age, it's just a matter of age. Do you have to qualify in, in other ways, like safety?
Well, I've been, um, well, the, um, it's a, and it's an application that we, we have to submit. And that application is ready. Um, we're just trying to figure out the scope of work that we're going to be utilizing the tax credits for at the moment.
Oh, what are the scope of work? Um, like categories? How, how is that organized? Or how do they, yeah, how, I, I just want to educate myself on it. Um.
Well, that's just what we are determining for our scope of work.
For the application?
Yes, for the application. Because it's actually, it's, um, one for the state. Um, and then it will be, it would be recommended to, at the national level, if we decide to pursue that. And then also there's a separate tax application.
Okay, um, okay. So I know when we, um, we passed the REZO to, um, seeking some assistance from the county um, to, uh, you know, just help, you know, for a public purpose, you know, just to rehabilitate the theater. And I know at the time Tricia Watson was a member of the board and the historical question came up. And I didn't really understand how it worked, but she, she had a lot of, um, information to share and, um, strong opinions about, um, why Queen wouldn't qualify for some reason. Um, so I don't really understand that, but I, so I just wanted to note that caution. So it may or may not qua, I don't know, but I think perhaps Tricia Watson would be a good person for you to consult with to, because I know she does a lot of that, that work for her, her, her businesses or nonprofits. Um, so.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
Be relevant, but if, I'd love to hear back from you maybe next meeting on what you learn about that. And maybe we can help as a neighborhood board, pass a REZO or something, whatever you might need to get that to happen.
Okay, um, sure. Uh, would you, would you happen to have her contact information?
I could probably find it in old email somewhere and I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, thanks so much, Becky. I would really appreciate that. This one moment, yeah.
Alright, thanks, Becky. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, June.
Hi, Adoree. Um, thank you for your update. I really appreciate your update on the Queen, um, Theater. Um, so are you going through the historic preservation through state and federal? Is that the application you're talking about and then doing the ta, a separate tax credit?
Yes, that is, um, what the plan is right now.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, appreciate the update. Thanks, Audrey.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, any other public input? Franklin, I believe you mentioned you might have public input for something.
Um, I just want to bring everybody's attention to, uh, a real danger that I recognized last winter during the wet season. And that is on the on-ramp, the Waiala on-ramp by Lower Campus Road, H1 West. Um, there's an area where the weed grows so high during the wet season that it completely blocks the view of the traffic trying to get on the freeway from that on-ramp. And also blocks the view of the cars on the freeway going by that on-ramp. It's very, very dangerous. When it was really bad last year, um, it was just bumper to bumper, cars cannot, you know, cannot even get on the on-ramp. Just everybody's super, it's super dangerous because they cannot see anything. So it's beginning to ha, uh, the, the weed is beginning to grow right now. And I just want to make sure that whoever is responsible, if it is the state, uh, state people doing it or their contractors doing it to cut that weed. Better yet, remove the soil and the weed and just concrete that area. So we don't have this death trap waiting to happen during the wet season. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Franklin. Okay, any other public comments? Alright, seeing none. Thanks very much. So we will move on to the presentations for this meeting. And our presentation for today is on the proposed Kilawea Avenue Complete Street Improvements. And I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you. Is it possible to do the lights?
Yeah. Alright, so my purpose this evening is to take a one-hour presentation from the city's complete streets. It's condensed down to ten minutes. So please know that there's much additional information available at CompleteStreetsAlohu.gov or whatever the website is. So our focus this evening is going to be on Kilawea Avenue. Uh, the city is looking at road improvements on a variety of other streets in our neighborhood. So again, I recommend you take a look at their website to learn more about those. Uh, next slide. Very present, short presentation.
You might have to refresh it. But don't be done that fast.
Yep. One second. Technical difficulties. Take care of this moment. Otherwise I will do this through interpretive dance.
Can we record that?
That should be entertaining.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk about these gates, whatever.
Do you, by, do you have your flat, right? The file was corrupted. So I will go back up again. Roll. Thank you guys for being very patient.
No worries.
This is all for. That's looks promising. Excellent. Alright.
Alright, alright. And then earlier you hit earlier, just to clean out that tools on the right-hand side of the screen because we don't need to see the common filth or and.
Full screen. Alright, so very briefly, what are complete streets? Complete streets is a urban planning concept whereby we are looking at a portion of our land that is owned by all of us, our public space, and using it for things other than just moving cars through. It's also for pedestrians and aunties with their walkers and strollers and trees and all that other thing. So thinking more holistically is what we're all about. Next slide. Thanks. So the impetus behind what the city is up to relates back to the revised ordinance of Honolulu where there is on the books laws looking at whenever the city is going to be doing a significant repaving of a street, they are obligated to think about these street principles and see if there's ways to improve our public spaces accordingly. Next slide. So unfortunately, on average, we are losing one person per week on our streets here on Oahu. So these principles of thinking about more than just vehicles are very important to life safety of all of us as we're out. So who is most impacted by vehicular accidents? Well, it's how people walking and our kapuna who maybe are not able to cross the street within their own limits. And so how can we help keep our streets safe then? Next slide. Also, we'll hear about in a little while, other modes of transportation, including bicycles. Uh, surveys that have been done of Oahu residents indicate that a good number, forty-two percent of people surveyed would bicycle more regularly if the streets felt a little bit safer, if they're more protected by lanes and so forth. I apparently am living in the four percent of lunatics who are just going to go biking one of the safe routes. Apparently more of you would be joining the adult safer. So next slide. So just so you're all aware, the city has been doing extensive outreach to the community to seek input about all of these plans. These are a variety of people that are reached out to and, uh, I'm sure they will coming up for public. Next slide. So these streets in green are the ones in our Kaumiki haul-up area that they are looking at improving at this time. And we're specifically going to be focusing on, actually, on Kilawea segment. Which zoomed in is this loop of Kilawea right there between, uh, the Eighteenth and Waiala is the area. Next slide. So they've done a variety of traffic studies over the years. Here's a little bit of data. Uh, interestingly, they have clocked people going seventy miles an hour down. That's not usually how fast we're all driving, but just to say that some strange things occurred. Uh, car volume is not terribly heavy, uh, which doesn't really justify more lanes of traffic for most of that road, which is why we're getting some different post-changes. Uh, we'll all be aware that there are several schools along that corridor, a middle school, elementary school, and a preschool that occurs in church. Have in the last five years had one traffic fatality along that road, uh, with a variety of other non-fatal accidents. Next slide. So on average, the speed that we all apparently are driving down this road is around thirty-five, forty miles an hour. Uh, and that's not necessarily the speed limit, so just, so all aware of how we're behaving. And we have some statistics over there on the side which indicates that when a car is going thirty miles an hour, you've got about a fifty-fifty chance of surviving being hit by it. So when we're going forty miles an hour, that's dropping less than half. Survived. Next slide. So one proposal on the table is just to lower the speed limit from its current thirty mile an hour, twenty-five miles an hour to help try and bring that speed down and reduce potential accidents and fatal deaths. Next slide. This is some statistical data about traffic counts. Again, not a whole lot, uh, as we would all know from personal experiences. Traffic is heaviest over by the mall with people coming in and out of those. Traffic is heaviest over by the mall with people coming in and out of those, uh, driveways and intersections. And then it just teeters off quite significantly as we move. Next slide. So currently, most of this segment of Kilua is four lanes of traffic, two lanes in each direction, which drops down to three lanes in front of the middle school. Next slide, please. And the basic idea on the table here is to reduce it from four lanes to just two lanes. The majority of Kilua Avenue with some exciting variations along the way. But maintain the four lane of traffic in front of the mall where that traffic. So I'm not going to talk about the eighteen twenty second proposals. You can go look on that online. I want to focus on the rest of it because it's a little more interesting. So next slide. So what we see there today is parking on two sides of the street and two lanes of vehicular traffic. And there's a couple of options on the table that the city is interested in. So option one is a buffered bike lane, which is to have parking, bicycles, roads striding or cones or whatever they're going to do. Two, a lane of traffic, a turn lane. So people can turn in and out of the driveways and then repeat on the other side. So you've probably seen a lot of these types of bike lanes. The city has been, uh, putting in a grayish streets around town. And next slide, please. This is kind of what this would look like. I think this is over on Louis side. But the idea is we've got bike lanes, some protection lane, turn lanes for each direction and. How many seen around? Alternative number two is called a protected bike lane. And the difference here, now the bike lane is riding against the sidewalk, then the protection, then the parking, then, uh, through traffic. So the advantage of this option is that it's safer for bicyclists and pedestrians could keep all the moving cars kind of closer to the middle of the road. So that's an option on the table. Next slide, please. And this is an example of what this would look like. Uh, we can pass some here. There's the bike lane all the way over against the sidewalk. And then the parked car, the buffering, those slower moving, um, users. All right. So the next segment of the road, slide. Looks like that today. Slide. So here's a little diagram of what we have there today, two lanes of traffic, parking, and then the landscape island down the middle of the road. And so implementing these principles that we were looking at before would be just have it down to one lane of travel. With a projected bike lane and then maintain the parking. So. It creates a bike lane. It is protected. It is slightly more dangerous in the sense that cars have been crossing the bike lane to get to our anything. Next slide. Next slide. Wow. So the city was good enough to do a little photoshopping and show us exactly what that might look like. And so it involves some new paint up for us. And so we can see cars parked. What was a lane? Now it comes to bike lane with the buffer and then the through traffic is there. Next. And so as you would expect, the other alternative is the fully protected bike lane where we move that parking up against the drive. And move the bicyclists against the sidewalk. Next slide. She have a picture. There's an example from another place in the community of what that looks like. Next slide, please. And then this on the bottom is a Photoshop of what that might look like on the way. So here we see the parked cars are against the road and we have buffer than the bike sidewalk. So that's another alternative that. And then a third alternative that the planners, uh, have gotten kind of excited about is this idea called a front vision lane. So the way that works is that the slow moving cars that are parking and getting back out of parking share a space with the bicyclists. So there's kind of one lane that goes through and you kind of peel off from it. Get out to the parking and you can also bike over there and then you merge back into the roof area of traffic. So I think the next slide have a picture of what that starts to look like. So the helpful orange diagram there shows you how that would work. That there's through traffic, there's some kind of a buffer, and then there's a sort of slower moving bicyclists and parking, getting out of parking lane. With parked cars, you sort of peel, pull over and you would park, pull back out and drive away. If you're bicyclists, you're kind of biking in this zone between the parked cars and moving cars. And then you sometimes get over and you're hitting. So this is something that's being implemented in other communities around the country and cities thinking like, this might be something we want to try here. Next slide. So the last segment, I believe, is from Mahoa onward. Next slide, please. So this is kind of what it looks like today, right in front of the mall slide. And implementing those same principles will start to look something like this with, uh, two lengths of traffic contained. Slide these. So one thought the city is having is to try to make it a little safer for the bicyclists to not be near the larger volume of cars. Is to try to encourage them to use an alternative bike route that bypasses this segment of Kilua Way up. So that bicyclists can do, bicyclists want to do and. That's one thought that's on the table. Next slide. And here is looking at this segment in front of the preschool and sort of being very conscious that there's going to be a lot of queuing of cars. Uh, for people drop off pickup at certain hours will be in that two different zone. Slide please. And so next steps is they're going to apparently be keeping us informed. We'll see when that happens. Maybe I'm doing that for the right now. And they'll be mailing people and design is ongoing. That's one last slide. I'll give you the website where you can learn more on Hulu dot gov slash streets. So I didn't actually check for time, so I apologize if I ran over. I'm trying to do notes. All right, great. Well, I'm happy to take questions to the extent that I have knowledge of.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Uh, any questions for Jason?
What about the spread that from the cost?
I do not know the cost. It's largely paved on the ground, so I think the cost should be fairly minimal to us.
The beginner is that it's some lanes.
It will still be asphalt pavement. It's just what they striped it on the ground.
So you know, we feel the way in which I'm at where I am. That's similar with a tree lane this way, tree lane this way. Total six.
Yes. At that intersection, it is wider. It is wider at the intersection itself. Yes.
Yeah. So you're not going to read any of those lanes on both side.
I believe that is intended to maintain what's doing now due to the larger volume of cars that come and go at that. And there's some statistical data and queuing distance information available at their website that you built. Yes.
I apologize. It's a little hard period, but I was trying to understand the Kilua Avenue. The, was that the average speed you clocked?
Yes.
That was, uh.
Thirty-five to forty miles an hour.
So that's the intent where like someone has gone higher than that.
The average speed are being registered about thirty-five to forty, and they're just letting you know that the max that they ever clocked was seventy miles an hour. Someone was in. I don't know. I got Kilua Way out and said.
I must've been super late. Cause I don't know who would go that fast.
Okay.
That's hard.
That is.
Wow.
Other questions for Jason? I have a quick question.
Yes.
So briefly, as a bicyclist, what alternative do you prefer in terms of where the bicycle lane is placed in relation to the parking in the sidewalk?
In general, I prefer the completely protected bike lane where the parking is against the drive aisle. So that you can be in a lane, pull off the park and then pull back in and never cross, uh, bicyclists. Now that being said, the potential danger there is if you have a parked car here and you're biking. And someone wants to make a right hand turn, they may not see you coming through. So either option has trade offs.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Okay. So I see Becky has her hand up. Becky.
Hi, thank you for that, um, Jason. I, I'm also supportive of, I'm encouraged to see these plans being made. Um, I drive in that area frequently to drop my daughter off at Kalani. And, um, you know, it's just like, if I have to do it, I just lose an hour sometimes because I'm stuck in lines of traffic, waiting to drop off their kids. So if, if the bike lane works, I, I think it would be great. Uh, you know, I don't know if you could maybe give vouchers to high school students so they can ride their bikes. But I think if whatever can be done to reduce the traffic in that rush hour period would be amazing. And, um, that's the best place to do it. I, you know, it's like driving into another country from Kamiki into Kahala that the width of the streets are like double. Whereas in Kamiki, you have to do this weave and let cars go all the time. Um, so I just, I just want to express my support for that. And, um, do you have, my question is like, do you have a projection of how long it will take before we see these changes?
I believe they're looking to implement this by twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
A relatively simple, just restriding of the road. They just need to kind of solicit input of how we want to re-stripe the road and then they'll.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Jason?
One online.
Oh. Noella. Question.
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Jones, what a wonderful presentation. Uh, you're clearly looking at the very big picture here. Um, I would like to say that I'm your sister neighborhood board, uh, person. I'm not on the, um, you know, the board, but I am a neighbor. And, uh, we're fighting for getting some speed tables on Diamond Head Road, which will absolutely flow into Kilua Avenue and all the surrounding thoroughfares. So I would like you to think about that, uh, right before Kahala, uh, where the preschool is at the corner there at Pueo and Hunakai. Um, that's, that's where it's twenty-five, uh, but everybody does speed. It was a good, accurate report. I appreciate that. But remember that this is, um, not going to happen overnight because we've got a big speeding problem down here, which we have to alleviate to make it easier for you to get your job done. And I applaud you, sir, and, uh, thank you very much. Mahalo.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the comments. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much.
Your real.
All right. So. Moving on, on our agenda, we have one resolution. And this is a proposed resolution requesting the installation of traffic calming measures on Sixteenth Avenue, Maoka of Wailei Road. And this was proposed by Lucas Shields, uh, who we heard from last meeting. Lucas, are you on the line by any chance? Okay, I know he indicated he may not be able to make it. So, um, the resolution was posted in the Neighborhood Board Google Drive. I hope everybody had a chance to review it. Any questions or comments on the reso? From the member? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
A motion.
All right. Motion by Judy. Is there a second?
Second, Kelsey.
All right. Thanks, Kelsey. Moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Let's see. Jeffrey, do we need to take a roll call or a voice vote is okay?
You do a voice vote.
All right. We'll do a voice vote then. So all those in favor.
Chair.
Yeah.
Can I fess up and say I haven't read it? Could you give me the Cliff Notes version?
Yes, absolutely.
Me too.
So this is a resolution, uh, with respect to Sixteenth Avenue, uh, Maoka of Wailei Avenue. And it discusses, um, or recommends traffic calming measures along Sixteenth Avenue due to speeding. Uh, that's been observed in the area. And the traffic calming measures include the installation of speed tables and other measures to reduce speeding and enhance safety for all road users. Uh, and it requested the board, uh, request that the city assess and install contextually appropriate traffic calming measures to encourage and facilitate safe pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Claudine and Sixteenth Avenue. And that the board also requests the traffic calming measures be implemented along Sixteenth Avenue from Wailei to Maumaide Park to encourage safe vehicle speeds around high pedestrian and bicyclists.
Thank you.
And there are some other, uh, general terms along.
Great summary.
Yep. Lucas also just joined the meeting.
Okay, Lucas. Lucas joined the meeting. Uh, Lucas, if you're there, any other comments on the reso?
I was, I was, it's not even working.
Okay.
He's with it.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, Judy, question?
Um, I just, I'll comment. I also, um, did, um, implement a three one one app, um, for Claudine and Sixteenth Avenue. Right there in front of Maumaide, there's all the pedestrian crosswalks are faded, completely faded. So I put it at three one app so that the Department of Facility Maintenance can actually re-stripe it. Because I took pictures and all the cross sections, it's like a three-way cross section. All the pedestrian sections are all like eighty percent of it's gone. So I already put a three one app, um, submittal to have those repaid, uh, re-stripped.
Right.
Mark Wong, thanks for using the three one one.
Sure. Which I will talk about during compensating.
All right. Any other questions, comments on the motion?
Lucas said no comments for me.
Okay. All right.
Chair.
Thanks, Lucas. Yes.
I feel like Sixteenth Ave comes up often with the board. Have we asked them to do any kind of, uh, words or something that's gave me the traffic studies of this area? I feel like we have.
Yeah. So the resolution does note that the Honolulu Police Department final response, and there's some numbers there. Uh, speed survey confirmed that there is speeding occurring on Sixteenth Avenue in both directions. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All right. So I'll call for the votes. Uh, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And any oppose? Any abstention? All right. The motion passes. Thanks very much. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is community updates. Uh, Kamiki Business and Professional Association, Calvin already provided his update. So we'll go on to the Hawaii Bicycling League and hear from our neighborhood bike leader, Eric McCutcheon.
It's like, thank you, Jason. Thank you, Lucas. Uh, this, the traffic calming, the road diet, the resolution that you just done, it's really just all a part of this complete streets, all a part of improving our infrastructure to help make our communities, our neighborhoods more livable, more walkable, more safe, uh, enjoyable and healthy. Um, I've been presenting on micro mobility, doing my little part of that also to sort of share with you some of the options that are out there that might be surprising. And we are going to talk about east gates today. But first, brought to you by HBL. Next slide, please. Don't forget to register for the Haleiva metric century. So if you're up for about sixty-two miles, a hundred kilometers of bike riding or fractionally less, whatever you like. But come out and join the gang, um, maybe hopefully five hundred, six hundred people on wheels in Haleiva, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Register early for the discount.
Yeah.
All right. So you might be aware, the Las Vegas Consumer Electronics Show just wrapped up. And they're showcasing all these amazing things that are adding electricity and AI together. So for example, and stay with me now, we're going somewhere. Mirrors now have AI, right? They tell you the weather, they give you a skin routine, they tell you you're the fairest of them all. It's amazing, right? Next slide. Refrigerators, right? Web enabled, they stream your movies. They, uh, tell you what's inside and a recipe of what you could cook. Amazing. Next slide. My favorite, the three D printer chocolate machine. My favorite, the 3D printer chocolate machine. I mean, we're just taking regular stuff and making it better. What am I talking about? Next slide, please. Good old roller skates. All right, so Segway Nine Bot has created the self-balancing mono-wheel, no straps, no key, step on and go, forward, backward, self-balancing, about seven and a half miles per hour. Next slide. E-Sen has created this sort of downhill ski boot style or strap-in style inline skate. Pretty cool. Okay, going about 15 miles an hour. And next slide. Airtrick A1 Ultra, four-wheel, looks like regular roller skates. Top speed 20 miles an hour. And that's the tech like probably a couple of weeks ago. Who knows what's next? So what I'm just going to leave you with is considering the traffic calming, considering our resolutions, considering your lifestyle, looking towards the future. Should these be sidewalk legal? Should they be bike lane legal? Should they be street legal? Just going to leave that with you and we're going to try to figure that out over the months to come. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Eric?
When can I get my hoverboard?
And what's kind of hoverboard? There are products called hoverboard.
There are products.
A little bit bulldog.
Yeah, the bulldogs on there. All right, let's see. Oh, sorry. I think Becky has a question for you.
Oh.
Yes, Becky. Sorry, I'm really chatty today. I, my stomach sank looking at this a little bit because my daughter broke her arm on one of those one-wheels. So I'm wondering how safe they are.
So we'll, we'll look at some of the maybe sort of downside issues that's coming up for all of this. But you know, the, I think the, the common answer is how safe is any road user? Jason shared the one pedestrian death. Not one pedestrian death, but yeah, maybe a pedestrian death a year. You know, it's, it's a question that you could ask of any, no doubt.
There was one death per week.
Per week, sorry, yes. So yeah, certainly an issue, certainly a safety concern that you as parents and we as users of all ages need to be aware of for any, as any road user. Yeah, please be safe.
Right, thank you. So Eric, I'll ask you the same question. So briefly, as a bicyclist, what is your preference in terms of the Kilaway proposals? In terms of the placement of the bike lane versus the parking?
Yeah, all right. First, I'm going to sort of bake answer as HBL that any bicycle infrastructure, hence the increased use, right? If you build it, they will come. So we do want infrastructure for all users of all modalities, make it safer and healthier. For me, as a very experienced, very much urban road bicyclist, I want to be next to the cars, in the travel lane, so I can go the speed of traffic as much as possible, keep the parked cars, pedestrians and everyone else that are not moving with me off to my right side. So I prefer a straight bike lane that I can see, it's not fading in and out as frontage. It's straight away, just like a lane for other vehicles that are moving, maybe always at the speed of traffic. Closest speed, my preference.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? All right, if not, thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you. We're in for a note. All right, next item of business is Kapalani Community College. Carol did email me to say that she has no report this evening. So we will move on to elected officials' reports. And the mayor's representative, Mark Wong. Mark, are you there?
I am. Good evening. Have very brief report, starting with mayor's newsletter, which is online at oneohahu.org, or you could go to the city website under the mayor's webpage. Just four items to highlight, the mayor's New Year's message. And there is also a summary of the year 2023 in review, just looking at some of the numbers at the city. An announcement for an off-leash dog park in Salt Lake. And finally, I'm going to toot my department's horn here. The city won the project of the year award from the Project Management Institute for its ERP system. So this is a software system that, that runs all the finances and the HR and the payroll at the city. And you know, I would like to contrast that with the recent news about the state system, which they, I think they spent $16 million or had a contract for 16 million and now they want to spend another 60 million. We, we rolled out this new system with basically zero problems. I was waiting to hear of, of any incidents, but we really had none whatsoever. So we're very proud of this system. You can read about that in the mayor's newsletter. There was one issue that I'm following up on, and that was a inquiry about putting a fitness court at somewhere in Kamaki area with a suggestion to put it near 10th Avenue, near Central Pacific Bank. There's a, there's a park there. And the Parks Department, DPR responded that the area is used by various programs, including the Summer Fund Program, which is a very successful program for the city. Also for fall and spring programs, Easter egg hunt and as a picnic area. So they are not planning to put any fitness court at that location, the Kamaki Community Park. And they do not have any plans right now for a fitness court in the Kamaki area. So that is all I have to report, but I will entertain any questions as usual.
All right, any questions for Mark Wong, the mayor's representative? Oh, it's Becky. Becky, question?
Hi, thank you, Mark. That was my inquiry. And I actually started to email with the person who does those fitness courts. And I didn't follow up yet, but I will share that. I, I, maybe you'll hear from them as I explore it further, but I wanted to thank you for, for doing that reconnaissance. And I also just wanted to ask, this award or this recognition that you got, I'm just guessing that you were behind it, were you?
Well, it's, it is a department that I run and I'm, I'm one of the executive managers on the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I did want to mention that this, this, these awards cover not just software or computer projects, it's all projects in the state of Hawaii. So that's, you know, construction, any type of, of planning.
So don't, don't try to escape without being congratulated. And I think you deserve a lot of credit for that award. And I just wanted to make sure that people know that. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good job, Mark. All right, Paul, you have a question?
Hey, Mark, it's Paul. Long time no see. Quick question. And it's more planning for the future. When hurricane season starts coming around, could we get some presentation perhaps from the city emergency management area or department? Maybe like Molly Pierce might come back and do a presle in that subject matter if she's that right person. If not, I don't know, you know, like here or someone like that or someone from his group. And that way it's just community awareness. Again, it's not till like hurricane season, not till like May timeframe, but in preparation thereof.
I will, I will ask. They're usually pretty happy to do that type of thing and would be good to see.
Maybe, yeah, make Molly come back and work.
I'll, I'll bring her some cookies and try to bribe her.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
Great, thanks, Mark. Okay, Lori, question?
Yes, I saw in the chat that Mark Wong said DPR did a fire risk assessment. So what is that and how can I get it? For what?
Yeah, I think I reported on that after the Maui fire, so I'm surprised the fire department didn't say anything about that. It was a joint project between DPR and HFD to assess the parks and park lands. So I will, I don't know if that's going to be on the website, but we, I did report on that.
Okay, cool.
I'll follow up and see where that. I don't know if that's something that they're going to share with the public, but they, they did do an assessment.
And Maumaide is on, on one of them, you think?
I think it's all the parks.
Okay, great.
I, you know, I can't speak for every department, but in general, we're supposed to do risk assessments across the city. So like in my department, every major software system we have out there hardware, we do, we do risk assessments.
Okay. Okay, so maybe I'll get with Denny Higa. Maybe he knows something. Right? Yeah.
Yeah, parks is a big department, but yeah, I'll, I will ask around and see if I can get more about the parks that are pertinent to, to this board.
Okay, thank you so much. And congratulations. I'm impressed.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Great. Other questions for Mark?
I think Becky has her hand up.
Yeah.
I just forgot. I, I don't know if you heard me tell Border Water Supply earlier. Here, my block on 15th Avenue, we still have our garbage bins out from the water main break. I don't know, we're doing this sort of defiant thing, but our trash is still out there. So I don't know. I assume the garbage trucks weren't able to come during the water main break, but then we might have been forgotten. So just wanted to pass that on to you.
Okay. I did have one little bit that I didn't share because it seemed so minor, but there is one tiny block, the tail end of Pu'panini off 22nd Avenue, I think maybe in this neighborhood board. And there's going to be some water main work in the fourth quarter of 2025. I know it's it's almost two years from now, but there was a notice that, that came out. So I think Brian has a copy of that map and I'm not absolutely sure that it falls in this neighborhood board. If it does, it looks like it, it literally is maybe going to affect eight houses. If you, if you live on Pu'panini Avenue, we can get you a map of that.
Yeah, so Mark, this is the Pu'panini near 22nd Avenue and Poli Kaua Street, correct?
Yeah, Poli Kaua.
Poli Kaua. Yeah, I don't believe that falls within this board, but yeah, good to bring it up though. Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, Jason, Jason, you have a question?
I do. Mark, I've noticed over the last, I don't know, five years or whatever it's been, there's been a fairly steady amount of homeowners leaving bulk trash outside their properties along the street. And I'm wondering if there's any possibility of returning to a regularly scheduled bulk pickup instead of having to call and schedule it because it seems like it's become a little bit of a insurmountable barrier to some people. They're just sort of leaving it there and never having it picked up by anybody. I'm sure it was a budgetary cut, but could we maybe look at restoring that at least at some interval?
I, I'll, I'll ask about that, but you, you're absolutely right. It's it's a lot more efficient to schedule the pickups than to have people drive around and look for look for things that people have put out. Because imagine canvassing the entire city is wastes a lot of time and gas, but well, I'll, I'll ask to see if they're, they're assessing the effectiveness of that. There may be some programs that you can call to report that too, because they do fine people for putting things out. That's not real popular either, but I'll, I'll ask for an update on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, thanks, Mark. Questions, comments? Oh, good.
Hey, Mark, I've got a question for you. You know, with the transfer dump at Middle Street.
Yes.
The dump at the Middle Street, where you pick your you know, garbage can is too full, so you can pick hot bars and all that stuff down the dump. They need to put more lights in there and restripe the yellow line. Because you know, when I go there, the guy tells me, eight, eight, she can barely see the numbers and plus the yellow line. When you back your car in, it's stalled, like if it's number eight. They're all kind of faded and it's stuck in there. So maybe change this part of the city dump.
Okay. Sure, I'll pass that along.
Yeah. New striping and the number, and put some lights in there.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
I second that suggestion.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So we're going to have to move on. So thanks very much, Mark. Appreciate it. Thanks for that. And congratulations. Okay, so we will move on to Council Chair Tommy Waters, who I see is online. Chair Waters, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening and Happy New Year. Keeping with the traffic and speeding theme, I have a number of things to report. Riser 2023-3002, Wailei Avenue between 18th, excuse me, 13th and 14th Avenue. HPD officers monitored for speeding from December 4th through 12th. While no speeding was observed during the day hours, officers on the night watch issued three citations for speeding. They gave two verbal warnings to motorists to watch their speed. HPD will continue to monitor and take appropriate action when violations are observed. On Riser 2023-2999, 16th Avenue between Claudine and Ke'Anu Street, HPD officers monitored for speeding same, same week, December 4th through 11th, and issued two verbal warnings to motorists to watch their speed. Fourth, four actual citations for speeding and one citation for no insurance card and one citation for non-use of seatbelt. HPD also will continue to monitor, take action when violations are observed. Also on Pahoa and 18th Avenue, during the same week, officers issued one verbal warning and 10 citations for failing, failing to come to a complete stop. They also indicate that they will continue to monitor. Also on 16th Ave near Claudine, they put a speed monitoring trailer, which this weekend when I drove by, it was still there, reminding people of their speed. Um, I'm happy to support speed calming devices on 16th Avenue if, if the board would like those. You know, it might be helpful for me and Director Wong to invite DTS to Kamaki Neighborhood Board. I've called Deputy Director John Nouchi a number of times to report various things that happened in the neighborhood. And he's been very responsive. And up until recently, they did not like the idea of speed tables or speed bumps. But since there's been so many traffic fatalities and accidents dealing with speeding, I think they've changed their tune. And it's unfortunate that people actually had to die before they actually changed their tune. Because we remember they used to always claim that they couldn't do it because of ambulances, fire trucks and police vehicles, but they, they did, they changed their tune and they're willing to do more of that. So happy to support that as well. Um, you know, we did do a number of, of traffic investigations. Unfortunately, and then maybe that's why we need DTS to come and speak to the board directly. Because oftentimes these traffic investigations take forever. But I'm happy to report that they are, our transportation services are taking our 16th and Wailei Avenue intersections seriously. And they're putting it in the budget to have a left turn lane onto 16th Avenue from Wailei. So, so that's, that's good news. As far as when it will actually. As far as when it will actually be built. I can't say because it's in the design phase right now. Typically, it's it's designed, then construction. So it's in the budget this year for the design, and they're currently working on it. Well, actually, I see it here. Approval is estimated to take two years, so twenty twenty-five, so. Apologize that this is taking so long, but we are on the radar and looking to get that fixed. And then um lastly, Riser, excuse me, Resolution twenty-three dash two-one-two that. I, along with Councilmember Se, introduced. Requesting Department of Transportation Services to conduct a traffic study on Wailei Avenue corridor. Between First and the seventh Ave, including cross streets. DTS has requested to submit a report of its finding and recommendations. As necessary uh to us, no later than one hundred eighty days after the adoption of the resolution. And this came directly from this board was concerned about traffic on Wailei Avenue, so. I'll I'll keep their feet to the fire to see if we can get an answer. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I don't know if you folks have noticed it, but the stoplight at the corner of Eleventh and Harding. So if you're coming from Mauna Lani Heights down Sierra Drive and want to get on the freeway. It's been backed up all the way to Wailei. So I actually um spoke to Deputy Director of DTS. He said that they're having problems with. Hawaiian Electric there. So I'll follow up with him to find out exactly what that meant. I I didn't really understand. Exactly what that meant. It looked like the electricity was fine to me. It just was the signal was. Wasn't it wasn't staying green long enough to clear everyone who was on Eleventh Avenue. Of course, you know, coming from. Uh Coco Head side of Harding, trying to get on the freeway, it's also been backed up. But I don't think it's anywhere near as bad as it was on Eleventh Ave. But um that's what I have to report. I also put, I think we emailed you Chair the. Legislative report dealing with various bills that we have. Well, last thing, you know, it it it's the new year and we're gonna. Start working on the budget very shortly, so just want to reach out to your board and see if there are any. Capital improvement projects that you're interested in that I can include in the budget going forward.
All right, thank you very much, Chair Waters, and I I think we will take you up on inviting DTS to our meeting, so. Maybe we can coordinate with Adam, Adam of your office. Adam, I think you're here ready for a appropriate date. Uh in which we can have a representative DTS president. That'd be terrific. Appreciate that. Um okay, questions from the board for Chair Waters? Becky?
Hi, thank you, Chair Waters, for all of that. I'm really um glad that you're reporting that DTS is changing their tune. You know, when you live here, you you know, you you see a different story than if you, you know, come and set up shop for a week and then with a clipboard and. Um so I I guess I'd I'd want to encourage DTS to pay as much attention. To the board minutes over the years, the neighborhood board minutes perhaps. Um and I wanted to emphasize also that we just passed this reso. Um uh you know, what was the title of it? Uh traffic calming measures for that Sixteenth Avenue section. Um and everyone was just jumping to vote for it, like they didn't even want to read the reso, like yes, absolutely. And then the presentation that was given at the last meeting was very persuasive, I thought. Um and if people are willing to volunteer so much time and get behind it. Um to, you know, do these models and presentations, like was it Lucas who did that? Um I think that's more telling than. Perhaps a study that's done once in a while, so um I guess I would just encourage them, and I think they would find if they just went through the board minutes. Since the time I've been on the board in twenty seventeen, they'll find ample evidence um and justification and. What is the word that you guys use? Um warrant? Is that what it was? A warrant? Um something like that to to justify the the changes. And then I just wanted to pivot to another totally different question relating to housing. I spent a lot of time on my holiday weekend reading the landlord-tenant code from the first section to the last. And just trying to like get a really holistic sense of what it's about. I've been both a landlord and a tenant, and I think this board knows about some of the woes I've experienced as a tenant over the last couple of years. And when I read it, I was actually really surprised about some things I did not know. And as a landlord and a lawyer, I was like, shame on me. I didn't know that I had this obligation. Um and then even double shame on the landlords for some of the things that they're doing that I've experienced personally. Um and I'm gonna be pursuing legal action for. Um but the. I had this crazy idea and I don't know, you tell me it's dilemma and I don't know if it's ever been hap- happened anywhere else, but. I I just sort of fantasized of there being like a a license to rent. So as a landlord, you should, you know, like they have Realtors licenses, you have to take tests. Like I I I feel like, you know, when I was a state employee, I had to take ethics exams, you know, to take these quizzes and make sure, you know, sunshine law. Our neighborhood board, we have to learn the sunshine law. This is housing is, you know, bottom rung, mazo hierarchy needs. Like, we all need housing. In other words, we're gonna get sick and everything's gonna break down from that. But it's put in the hands of, I don't know, I mean, they, it's like an oligarchy, really. And they have all this property and the market is so competitive. You know, I I was living in a slum for a whole lot of money because I needed a place to live and I had no choice. And to qualify for a rental was perhaps even more. Rigorous than getting a mortgage, which I've been through too, so it you know, and I was, I just felt like I was treated like a. Dirt, like a second-class citizen trying to apply for a rental. Um and it's just because they're the mighty ones who own the property. But when I read the code, I I see that they're not following the law and it just pisses me off. I'm sorry. Um and I just feel like if you're going to, and not you, but these landlords, if these landlords are going to benefit immensely from this market. Um they should have to put in a little work to learn the law. And if if they, you know, if they have to like take a test and pass multiple choice, maybe ten questions, make sure they're up to date on things. Then it might just weed out some of um the people who aren't gonna, you know, honor. Rule of law. So that's just a thought I had. I don't know if anyone ever does it, but if if there could be like a license to rent sort of concept, that's just. You know, my fantasy. That's all.
Oh, thank you for saying that. That's that's a really interesting comment. I'm trying to think of the word that we learned in law school. Implied implied covenant of habitability.
Warranty of habitability.
Right, where you actually have to have, it has to be habitable. It has to be livable. Right? Otherwise, you can't do it, but you're right. Lots of times renters are behind the eight ball. Um, not happy to work with you and perhaps our our legislative counterparts to figure out what we can do to. Ensure that renters are on even playing field with the landlords.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Becky, any other questions, comments? Jason, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Waters, for your report. Uh can you tell us when you need uh feedback for capital improvements? To be ready for your budget? When was, when is that date?
Um drop dead date, I think, would be in May. That's why I'm bringing it up early, so we can think about it now and talk about it, but sooner the better. Um Adam and I can take notes and then we'll have, once the budget comes from the mayor. We anticipate it's gonna be March first or thereabouts, March first. Um then we're gonna go through our process of of speaking with every director. They justify their budget to us. And then we can amend the budget, and that's when I would add um Kamaki's uh suggestions. So. Probably end of March would be the best, but anytime now would be great.
Wonderful, thank you. And a kind of a more comment for yourself and uh our other city officials. You know, I very much appreciate the traffic studies and the reports back to us from police and fire, and you were just citing traffic studies. I would just comment, and maybe you can appreciate this as a legislator, giving us statistical information by itself is not very useful. We need some contextual information to really appreciate this. You tell me you had ten traffic citations at a given week. Were there only ten cars? Were there a hundred cars? How does this compare to other streets in Honolulu? You know, we need some context to put these statistics in perspective to see, is this a problem? Is this typical? Is this like not a big deal? We shouldn't worry about it. You you kind of see what I'm getting at, so I would just ask when. Uh we're being reported to from from yourself and from these agencies that were provided a little bit of this contextual information. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Basically, what happens is we get complaints and it can come from a neighborhood board. Remember, it can come from a constituent, and what we do is we pass it on to HPD. Yeah, so this is the information that HPD gives back to us. But if it was up to me, I'd have them out there all day, every day. But they'll go out when we get a number of complaints, and certainly when I ask them to go out there, they've been very, very responsive and have gone out there. So it's just reporting back to you what they reported to me. But I guess, back to you folks, based on these reports. Do we wanna put traffic calming devices on these various streets? Whether it be Sixteenth Avenue, Wailei Avenue. Right near Claudine Street or or Keanu Street on Pahoa. I know, for example, coming down Pahoa from Kamaki going towards Kahala Mall. That's dangerous. I tried crossing the street a couple of times and it's just dangerous, but I'm curious. What you folks think about? Well, I know you want traffic calming devices, but let's decide together where exactly do we want to ask for them? And in fact, what I'll do, Chair, is let's work together. And when we get the Department of Transportation to come to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board, let's be prepared with a list of places. That we actually want these traffic calming devices, right? So we have something concrete to tell DTS. Rather than just say we got a speeding problem throughout throughout everywhere. But I appreciate what you're saying and and I get it and and we can do better in reporting, but. Again, this was based on complaints that my office got.
All right, thank you very much, Chair Waters. You know, we're gonna have to move on, so I would, I know you have a comment, but can you just do it directly with Adam? And we're we're just gonna have to move on because we're fifteen minutes on this topic, so thank you very much, Chair Waters. Appreciate it. All right, so we're gonna move on to Josh Green's representative. Is Amanda Stevens on?
Or you know, Constable Se's office?
Uh oh, I'm sorry, Calvin Se's office.
I'm here.
Constable member Se, go ahead.
Yeah, you had my report. Chair did a great job. I'll be happy to answer any questions or respond to any questions later.
Okay, any questions for Councilmember Se or comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you something. You know, old way of life road, on the right-hand side, you go to the freeway. And you can stay on the left, you go down by the Humane Society and then you get to University Avenue.
Yes.
There's a sign saying road construction. Where is that road construction gonna be? On your left-hand side, you can see that linking with the word road construct. I've seen that sign for a long time now. It's, I think, there's cars coming out the freeway there too, so.
Let me go and check on it and we'll get back to you because I believe from the old Wailei Road to the freeway. Is the Department of Transportation Services, which is the state of Hawaii, okay?
He needs to check on it. He'll get back to you.
Oh, he's gonna check on it.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments for Councilmembers Se? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Councilmember Se.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year to all of you.
Happy New Year.
And tell Chair Waters you did a great job. Aloha.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Se. All right, go back to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Amanda Stevens on? Are the governor's representative? All right. Seeing no representative, we'll move on to Senator Stanley Chang's office. Is he here or his representative?
Hi, my name is Faith Kintua. I am the legislative aide for Senator Stanley Chang. And I just have a short bit for everyone. Um Senator, I'm gonna leave you with a couple of notes first. And I'll include all of these links in the comment section as soon as I'm done talking, but. You can find the January newsletter on Senator Senator Chang's website at senatorchang.com/newsletters. You can also sign up for the housing newsletter, um and again, I'll drop the link. I definitely recommend it. He does weekly ones and a monthly one. Opening day was today, so Senator Chang's priorities are. SB twenty fifteen amend rental housing revolving fund priorities. SB twenty sixty-six amend two oh one H thirty-eight to create another pathway for. Housing um for Hawaii residents, occupants who own no other real property. SB twenty forty-five, reform the qualified allocation plan, QAP, to prioritize government. Slash LPA, early loaner payment and perpetual affordability. And right now, this one's still in draft, but um it's zero four nine five SB SMA, but RH. R F, the uh rental housing revolving fund credit enhancement. And then the last thing I wanted to note, um or that he wanted to note was the grant aid application process for the twenty twenty-four legislative session. Is now open. The legislator will con- legislature will continue to accept GIA applications until Friday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. At four thirty PM, and the final determinations will be made as council on revenue forecasts in January and March are published. And long-term plans for wildfire recovery efforts unfold. The eligibility verification stage requires the submission of documentation to verify that the grantee meets the standards for a grant award. For additional details on the GIA application process, you can visit the Capitol website and look up session and then GIA. So again, I'm going to include those links in the comment section, but that's all Senator had to share today.
All right, thank you very much, Faith. Any questions for Senator Chang's office? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Faith. Appreciate it. We will move on to Senator Lesihara. Speaking, uh speaking of Senator Hara is perfect timing.
Where do I go? Where should I?
Up front. Yeah, I think I might go up front. That'd be terrific. Thank you. Yeah, you can go actually on the side, so you don't get the uh.
Right there, right, right there, sir.
Yeah, right in the corner. That that's perfect. Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 yeah, by the table, yeah, right there.
As you know, uh today is opening day. Um we're low key, we had no guests on the floor. Uh and so it was uh. So we're, sorry, you're, so we've been having here. Yeah, I've been asked any question and I'm not sure I missed, you know, whether you read on it or earlier. I was online. Then I thought I I gotta go home. I thought I'd stop it here. So yeah, I'm not sure how often I can be here during sessions, so. Questions. I'm not sure what interests you would have.
All right, any any questions for Senator Hara? Comments?
Well, maybe you could tell us what a couple of your priorities are for this session.
I was interviewed by a Kamiki High School student, Larry Donalalelo, and he asked me a question. I said. And he asked me that question. I said, uh, so I I am, I'm doing uh the four three areas. This ethics campaign reform and um let's say process. But my major interest is that this is my thirty eighth, let us say, session. I've seen nineteen waves of people coming to the session, nineteen different organizations, both the House and Senate. So I've seen a lot of it. Uh, and uh I was in the Lieutenant Governor's Office of the original nineteen seventy two. And the same path we had then. And you know, let us say, just try to do, I mean, they do as much as good job in terms of what you can do in two years or what you can start in two years or what you can campaign on for two years. Uh, and that's important. In addition, we need to build infrastructure or um which we haven't done because that's like a decade, five years, ten years. And you know, let us say, our cycle is is faster than that. And so that's one of those uh consequences of the system we have. I remember uh Governor Bingo, she did a lot of work in to deal with homelessness. Uh, we went all around all around the state and there was a lot of activity. And then it went away. A lot became uh you know, something to campaign on. And so I'm trying to uh get a community conversation to sustain it. But the community is is one that the community is is who has to deal with all these problems. Uh, we are your elected representatives uh who try to do the best you can, but given the structure, as I explained. So uh so my focus are those three areas plus you'll see is uh like human infrastructure, it's collaboration basically. And that was the President President's message of today is the problems are so complex. Mustling through doing what you want and need, you know, need doing what need to be done by really, you know, putting some shoulder in the that works except for complex issues. You can't do that. You have to really, you know, get a lot of pieces together. And that's what we got. People are now realizing that it's much more complex than than just put more money at.
If I may follow up with a more specific question, what conversation is there at the legislature that may be regarding the governor's emergency proclamation on housing? He sort of introduced that while you folks were on recess. Uh, and now that you're back in as another branch of government, what might you folks be talking about with that in terms of supporting it, questioning it? Where are you folks at on that?
He basically backed off on almost all of the some all controversial incident, uh what people thought was an overreach or yeah, and uh so we're that's not this, that's not a whole lot of conversation right, because we don't have. Now, if there's another proclamation to wave um redevelopment. You wave the archaeological.
Right.
Because when you put in line, there are sure variables. And now that it's gone, you know, the O P O. We have laws now. And so the governor may, good. So that would be interesting. How, you know, where you're dealing with a Hawaiian community, you know, not let us say the different community. And so there kind of, it's a really um that's pretty complex and deep and very, it is historical. It's remnants of civilization. So we're shifting from um power structures that are muscle based to community based solutions. And that's what's wanting to happen there. But we're not experienced that. We're not a values, you know, we're trying to be values based, but that's really rule based. And when you're rule based, you have to deal with rules. And so I think that's the that is uh the balance is having rule based institutions. You wanting to be value based um projects. So we're dealing with two paradigms that are trying to coexist and it's gonna be but we need to do that.
All right.
Uh, Senator, uh, what is your take on this new Army Corps of Engineers flood mitigation project in cooperation with the city right now? I know you were involved. I remember um at the neighborhood board meeting here at the church uh when it was still under the original Army Corps project. Um, what is your take on on their plans? And um I believe um the cost to the city or the earth and burn a lot around the Hawaii Golf Course, which is city managed but state owned. Um, educated guesses, they'll probably come to the state to ask the state to to come up with some money to help them defray the cost of that project. What is your take on on this new Army Corps flood mitigation project with the city?
So their intention is to serve the community. But as a it'll be along with the community. So the community had asked me and a few senators in in August to have a meeting because they felt not heard. Or they didn't want to hear. I mean, I don't bring agencies were never not taught to listen to, they're taught to get worked with, especially Army Corps. Army Corps, I mean, my father's, I'm a military guy. My Army Corps was indispensable. You cannot, you could not do logistics with Army Corps. So they're great. It's just when you apply it to like um uh New Orleans, right? When they they do, they mean well, but they do not know the impact and how the role of of um ecosystem, you know, restoration and how the the what do you call it? The the longhand waters, how they they've been stopped and and the flow of
The oasis stuff.
So my, so in September, hundred seventeen people were there. One hundred percent of them, because we had small groups of about six people, sixty eight. One hun- and then each person, they did pros and cons and on various propositions. We proposed a number of five propositions and with the intent that um that uh intent was to identify propositions that we believe a lot of people would agree. And so there was one that every single person agreed to. That was a watershed restoration be part of the project. Uh, and now that's, so that's then he asked all the all the consensus, we all had a consensus. It's a level of consensus. You know, one is uh we're we're so enthusiastic, we're so important, we're doing last is, and yet between five levels, the lowest level is, I don't like it, but I trust losing the group. So it's usually between and because we, so the watershed represent restoration was a one hundred percent at the highest level. Now you're talking about sort of because you take another hundred people, same result. So then you can say it's a consensus. So when the community says we want this or not, so the community, we haven't got into the walls, but just like the bridge, it's not who we are. It must be a way to address it without um altering our sense of who we are. And I I think it can be done. I don't, it's going to be up to congressional legislation because they're the ones providing the money and the city is the one who's who's being served. The problem with that is there's sea level rise in plan. And then the city's plan is to um and when that happens, you have water coming out of the storm currents. And and so their plan is to shut it out. But then all the water, where does the water go, right? All the other water coming down, you gotta know where to go. So the plan is they have, I think, a hundred and forty something million to uh the solution is because they're all excited. Problem is that that hundred something million is not in the dollar amount. One point four billion. So there's, so I think it's um, this is not an EIS, it's not a final study. All it is, it's a feasibility regrouping report. Because when this mayor committee stopped it, said, wait, we gotta, you know, doesn't sense of yes. So they reissued a study study and it's a, it's a reorganization, re I don't know what you call it, but um so then 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 they're on, they're in the side and then maybe
All right. Thank you very much, Senator. Okay, we're gonna have to move on. Any last question, comments for Senator Hare? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, let's see. Our next representative is Jackson Sayama. Representative Sayama.
Good evening, everyone, uh and happy opening day. It was nice to see some of you at the Capitol. Thank you for stopping by. Uh, I believe we are going to have a very fruitful and busy legislative session. Um, for myself, I have some priorities and bills. Uh, we could start with maybe the pharmacy workforce development. I'm helping the University of Hawaii's School of Pharmacies establish a special fund for uh money going towards a workforce development initiative. The University of Hawaii's Medical School and Nursing School have this fund, but the pharmacy school does not. And so that, you know, it's been proven pretty effective for the medical school and nursing school. So I'm just helping them along. Another one I have is mentoring moped insurance. Um mopeds have uh been exempt from states uh mentoring minimum insurance requirements, which other automobiles are covered under. Uh, this will be removing that exemption. Um, another major, uh, and I don't think this will be passed this session, um, but this would be regarding condominiums minimum uh reserve requirements. Um, this will basically require condominium association boards to put in, uh, we still don't have a number yet, but we estimate around ten percent of their annual revenues towards a reserve fund that will go toward the repairs of major projects and infrastructure of the condominium as a whole. Uh, and lastly, that kind of transitions into a major topic for my committee in consumer protection and commerce, which will be condominium uh insurance uh policy and legislation. Uh, we have seen over the interim condominium insurance policies and reinsurance go sky high. Uh, then this for a number of reasons, um, there's global hurricane increases as well as a condominium in Florida collapsed. And so that triggered a whole bunch of dominoes, uh, which leaves Hawaii in a very precarious situation when it comes to can we get our condominiums insured, which affect, of course, housing for condominium property, uh condominium unit owners. And so the state uh will have to take a look at potentially reactivating the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund to create a last resort market for these uh condominiums to acquire insurance policies. Uh, so to get the loan to make the repairs necessary. Uh, it's going to be pretty expensive, we imagine. We don't know yet what the reinsurance market will look like for the state of Hawaii, but we will learn over time, uh perhaps in February. Uh, but with that, uh CPC will be looking at a number of issues, of course, uh some of them controversial. Uh, but I look forward to working with the Kamaki Neighborhood Board uh for this legislative session. Uh, within the community, though, uh just one last thing. I'm working with uh DPR. I just met with uh the deputy, the managing director for the City and County of Honolulu. My form B about the Mauna La Ni'i Heights Community Park Recreation Center. Uh, since it's been renovated four years ago now, it hasn't been opened. Uh, we, I intend to work with them to open it uh this year sometime in March for just a coffee talk uh with the community of immediate neighbors. And then we could kind of go from there to organizing more regular uh programming for the residents in the neighborhood. Uh, with that, uh, oh yeah, and thank you Lori again for from Division Kamaki for organizing that meeting. I'm on my park. Uh, we look forward to future meetings with uh the Division of Urban Forestry uh to talk about potential work on fire breaks for the community. With that, I'm open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Representative Sayama. Any questions for Representative Sayama of the board? From the community?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Rep, did you say, did you hear me correctly when you said Mauna La Ni'i Community Park Pavilion?
The Recreation Center, the rec room.
Rec room. So uh a top field, a playground on
Yeah, so it's next to the playground. There's this uh facility that's been closed for a while.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Representative. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to State Representative Bert Kobayashi. Is he on? Or is he representative? All right. I don't see him on. So we'll move on to Congressman Ed Kies or his representative? Is anybody on for Congressman Kies? All right. If not, we'll move on to announcements. Um, I do have one quick announcement. Uh, we did receive a notice of application for um a conditional use permit minor that DPP is reviewing. This is for Lana Keela Church, a meeting facility. Uh, three, five, one, eight uh Manali Avenue and six oh three, six oh seven, six fifteen, Tenth Avenue in Kamaki. So we did receive this. I received it today, although comments were due on January eleventh, twenty twenty four. Uh, but I did, I asked Jason and his committee just to take a look at that. So um so it's in his good hands. Any other announcements from the board? Okay, if not, we'll move on to board business. Report of the Planning and Zoning Committee, Jason.
Uh, Planning and Zoning Committee met back in November. We largely discussed the Kilawaia Avenue uh roadway measures, which I presented to the group earlier. And the only other thing was the uh church's conditional use, uh which you just mentioned as well, which I will work into.
Perfect. Thanks very much. All right. Any questions for Jason?
Oh, I should mention our next committee meeting will be in February.
Great. Thank you. All right. Along those lines, uh the next item of business is approval of the November thirtieth, twenty twenty three Planning and Zoning Committee Minutes. Hopefully, everybody's got a chance to take a peek at that. Jeffrey, do we need a motion to approve those or?
Have a voice on you.
Okay. Um so is there a motion to approve those minutes? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right. Motion passes, the minutes are approved. Next item of business, approval of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty three written summary for video record. Hopefully, everybody's got a chance to review that. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, any abstentions? The motion passes, the minutes are uh, legislature, oh. All right.
That guy.
Okay. Any reports of members of attendance at other meetings? Anybody? Okay. Seeing none. Next meeting of this board is on Wednesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty four, six thirty PM, right here at the Kamaki Public Library or online via webex. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.
Happy New Year, everybody.